Yes, we call the meeting in order at 5:02 PM. Members, we have present or Wendy, Steve and myself. Carl said he's gonna be a few minutes late. And I did not heard from.
We have Brett too.
And Brett, Brett, you're officially on the committee now, right?
No.
No, he's a.
No, there's just not a space, there should be a space there.
Yeah, he's an observer, right?
Or staff liaison.
Staff liaison, so there's five members of which we have three. So we can declare this form. And we're reviewing today the Rangeley Comprehensive Plan Goals, Policy Actions and Strategies. Does anyone feel they have a conflict of interest on that? If you do, I'd be impressed. Okay, we have any adjustments to the agenda, Joe?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, review the meeting minutes, anyone have any questions? Joe sent out a copy.
Motion to approve meetings.
Okay, Wendy, motion to approve. Steve seconds, all in favor? Minutes are approved as have submitted. Okay, old business, I think we really had any, right? Did we determine our other meeting in September? That was the only other old business I think it was the fifth.
Fifth in nineteen.
Right. Correct. Yep, okay, fifth at four and the nineteenth at four. Okay. Anyone disagree with that?
No.
And Joe, if you don't mind if we can put that, I think we have that in the minutes, right? And so when we do the agenda, I don't mind if you wanna list proposed future meeting dates on there. That way people can look ahead, they can't make it. Okay, any, anything else in old business, think we're good?
Good.
New business, Comprehensive Plan Task List. Okay, everyone's got a copy? I apologize, I probably should have had Joe forward this to everybody on Friday as well, I was on the road. So basically, however you'd like to go. My thought is we just kinda start at the top and go down through. And we can say, let's talk about it today. Let's table it for another day of conversation or another meeting. Or based on progress or whatever. We could propose removing it from the list. And what I'd like to do, especially we don't have all members present, that if we propose moving something from the list, we'll mark it and then we'll bring it up again at the second meeting and make sure it's on the same page.
I have a question on just the process, just maybe one step up the ladder on this is ultimately us as committee members gonna be assigned a leadership of segments of this or something like that, or exactly?
Well, we could do something like that, it's all a question. To me, it, we can take a minute to kinda discuss, I mean, in my head, my thought is, is that we're gonna take a fairly light touch, other than maybe looking at. Every comp plan I've ever dealt with throughout there just sits on the shelf and doesn't do much. Everyone has all these grandiose ideas of implementing and things happen. So to me, I think it would be really important if we could go through this exercise and determine some key elements that really say, okay, we should sink our teeth into these and try to get set up for implementation. Or if there's some key issues that show up that are factually incorrect. Like I think when this plan was done in two thousand twelve, the Rangeley Inn wasn't one of the historical buildings, but now it is. So that's a clear update.
One example of probably a number of them.
Right, but that's a clear update there. So my thought is, is that if we can, over the next three months, try to go through and clean up any of the misknowns or different things that are factually incorrect. Talk about strategically whether there's things that really need to be engaged into or if they're just dead weight. And three, clearly identify the key issues that we think are gonna need to be approached over the next ten years. Then work on that part of the plan to the point that we have something that's clear by the, by the spring, whether we, you know, we do some hearings or whatever we decide to do in order to get more input. And try to have something that's pretty clear by March, so then we can do the formal public hearings and everything so that we can make the June ballot. And then if that gets approved, then we can submit a statement, takes another ninety to a hundred and eighty days for them to bless it. And then the implementation, I think this committee could keep going and then year two would be, okay, we're gonna go down through the ordinance is what matches up against what we've agreed on with those pieces and try to get those taken care of over the next year. And I, I see we're on the other side of it. Now, we might find out as we dive into this come January that we're like, there's no way in hell we're gonna be ready for March. And then we gotta kick it down the road, but the nice thing is, is that November is a presidential election year. So in my opinion, we've got two bites of the apple, if we miss June, we realistically could have a vote on the comp plan in November because there's enough people that go to the polls.
Yeah.
Or file absentee that we could, we could feel like we've gotten a reasonable public vote in response to it. I think, you know, if it was twenty-three and there's not a congressional or a presidential election, then typically that's a low vote voting year, but that's in my head. But I'm open to Wendy and Steve, you guys say what you think, but that's kind of what I had roughly in my head. I'd love to see us get it ready so that it can go in June. I feel like we could spend a lot of time spinning wheels on a lot of this stuff when in reality, I think there's some pretty good bones in what already exists. There's a ton of time put into the vision.
My own putting reason that bringing it up was the proficiency to move along, like, like, you know, if certain, uh, maybe the idea to prioritize these will go through as you're describing is probably the right way to start. And then ultimately, I didn't know if there was gonna be a lot of work to do on some of these things that somebody would have to have that task, one of, one of the committee members.
Yeah, and I think.
That's all.
I actually, of all people, Warren Cook taught us when we had, when he was running Saddleback for a year, a year and a half, one management thing that I liked that he had for a tool, he had this thing called a task list. And basically, anything on that list was up for grabs. We have a very talented committee, I think we've got some knowledgeable people that, you know, we do a task for this and say, oh, that, that, well, who wants to work on that? Okay, well, maybe Steve and Wendy work on this one, or Chris and Wendy work on this one, or maybe Steve alone they work on this, especially if it's like hospitality, that's your wheelhouse. You know, those, we all have different skill sets that we can attack at that point. So.
Sounds good to me.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I knew I should use the term task list at one point, I said, is that the same as a task? So I was saying, so it comes from a Warren Cook kind of strategy, which.
Well, I love Warren Cook, he's a great guy. Yeah, well, it was an interesting thing because it allowed, it allowed people, you know, if you get quite a few talented people at the table, then everyone can, there's really no.
I'm with you.
Hierarchy as much, I mean, I'm more of a cheer to help facilitate things going, but I plan on being an active member with opinions and stuff like that versus just a facilitator.
Yeah, of course.
So, um, I think we do that. Wendy, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I have some thoughts. With this list, it's the first time, yes, I've seen it. Because some of these actionable steps are allocated to particular organizations, I think we mentioned this last meeting. Instead of us going through each one where some of these have already could have possibly been completed, I'd really love it because I think that would speed up the process to get a list from the plan or to get a list from the Historical Society in terms of actionable steps, what they've done, what they chose not to do because they thought it was irrelevant and what they, is still open. Because then you, if it's already done, it doesn't really need to be on, on our new, you know, actionable steps.
I agree with you on that.
And I also think that we should utilize the resources that we have available to us with AVCOB, you know, especially with the mapping and things like that, because that should be updated just because it's been so long. And I think that we can completely take the comp plan and carve it out into things that need small updates and things that need big updates. And those are, I mean, I went through the whole thing and wrote notes about what I think, what I have questions and what I think is a good idea. I think we also need to talk about, you know, the, the proposals because we, that's on the table. You know, there was twenty-five thousand dollars advocated, allocated, sorry, last year, and then there's twenty-five this year, right? Is that right? Okay, but we, we already have the RFP out, we've got three proposals in, we've got three entities that are willing to participate if we choose to use their assistance. And before kind of going through everything, maybe we should figure out what we're doing with those people and then give whoever it is a clean, cleaned up list based on all the input from the different departments and organizations and, you know, facilities in town, just to make sure that we're being as cost effective as, as possible. And like you said, with the intellectual matter, I'm sure that we could tackle this very easily. But, you know, some of this stuff with state compliance for ordinance language for land use has changed significantly since, you know, two thousand twelve and especially coming up in July first, the LD twenty oh three is gonna be a big, you know, land use change law, that's the one that allows for accessory apartments, all, all that kind of stuff. So I just wanna make sure that we're not doing a whole bunch of work that's busy and then we have somebody come in that's gonna be facilitating this. And it might be wise to say, what do you want? Cause AVCOB's already, we already have a relationship with them and they can easily do the mapping and everything else. Really, it comes down to who do you wanna help write the plan? Or do we need somebody to help us write the plan? I mean, that's a valid question too. And one of the things that is important, I think, once you figure out your laundry list of what's done and what isn't done, is you, my experience with comp plans is always to find what are the problems? Because you don't wanna get answers before you figure out that it's a problem, something that you wanna solve. And you don't wanna answer, you wanna best for the work of the committees and the departments later on in the process. You know, we're really identifying, it's like a squad analysis almost, you know? What's an opportunity, you know, what do we have in front of us, what's a problem, what are we trying to solve, where do we wanna go? So I, I mean, I'd like a cleaned up inventory from this old plan, just so we're not wasting our time talking about something they, you know, the Historical Society can say, oh, we already did that.
I think, I had a couple of follow up questions to what you said, all great stuff, I don't disagree. I believe at the last meeting you talked about Joe was kinda reaching out to make sure that, especially eternally, anyone you had access to, like on your team here, was going to be updating their pieces here or make sure that they're done. I don't know what kind of timeline you gave for that, or some committees. But I would think if we could get those for the September nineteenth, I think that would be helpful. Do you think that's too short a timeline, Joe?
I think, I wanna understand what it is you're asking me to do.
Sure.
So there are a lot of folks in here that are not intern, like the Historical Society.
Yeah.
So, and there are some internal things here that don't exist, for instance, we don't have a town plan.
Right.
So those, you can all saw that way, so.
Like the economic, what I'm talking about, it's like the Economic Opportunity Committee. Like I talked to Shelley and they've, they've been keeping updated notes in that, whether or not they're on your spreadsheet, I guess is the question.
Most of them are, there are some that she's sending a PDF that are not intern.
Okay.
I figured when we got it open on the document.
Right. So I guess what, so I, I agree with that and I think that's what we could, we could talk about that as we go forward today about what's reasonable timelines and then we can also work on our task list of who's going to, you know, we don't need you, you don't necessarily, Joe, have to be the only one that reaches out to groups.
Right.
We can, we can break some of that up and say, you know, especially if people have different connections with different organizations.
But I do, I do to your point, Mr. Chairman, agree that, you know, it is appropriate to meet or with the staff, the internal, the town.
I think the staff and then anything they could get from the committees via the board chair, the board selectman chair should be able to get that data in, I think, easily and then go from there.
Yep.
So today, I think we could kinda just kinda go through this thing and be like, okay, that's interesting, there's, there's nothing on here but we don't know.
Right.
So it's, it's probably maybe a little premature on that part. The other thing is, is that I was thinking about a little bit with the consultants, I read through their three groups. They're three pretty diverse areas. So what if we just worked out a deal with all, all three of them and if we just go as our task list divide up, we don't have a lot of time and give certain groups certain things to work on. Because it looks like, like especially the group out of grade there, they do little bits and pieces, it looks like, that they've done for a few plans.
I think one of the things we'll recognize.
Maybe they're not interested in that.
We don't know yet, we're gonna interview, but I think scoping is important to do now because it's move through this. If you talk about historical elements, the RFP asked about creating a little historic, old register. Or that there was some other element tied to that, but some of that is going to, could be expedited by these consultants. So I think it's important to think about the scope that you're looking for or you feel like you're able to manage from here.
Right. Well, that was the form-based code question. If, this is what it is. It's item D.
I think it was just a board analysis, you were studying. A concept.
Oh, kinda like what Falmouth and Yarmouth did a little bit about trying to get some consistent writing.
You could also do design review too. Design review versus, you know, form-based code. And a lot of towns now are moving a little bit away from form-based code and doing a hybrid of traditional, you know, zoning and, and form-based code because if you get the wrong people in the wrong positions, it could go wildly wrong just based on subjective opinion.
I used to deal with, yeah, I used to deal with the portable ones, March, month of, that whole group. Yeah, so there's a lot of different.
Right.
Lot of different interpretations and stuff, and even the same person, depending on how long they've been in the job, they change their mind.
Right, different opinions, different times.
So it's interesting, so I guess that's the question we have to look at.
I think we need to interview the, the, you know, participants in the RFP first to get an idea. And I, I like the idea of breaking up the scope a little bit and I think that that makes sense, I really do. Because a lot of this more making sure that the ordinance language is compliant with the comp plan would be in AVCOB's wheelhouse really significantly. They can do all the mapping, they can do that stuff. And some of the stuff that doesn't need a lot of, you know, technical background is more like, you know, we're gonna have to flush out some questions and get public input, which I think is hugely important in a plan. And you need a facilitator a lot of times for that, whether it be, you know, monkey survey or, you know, paper survey or a visioning meeting or something like that. And I'm not talking about the vision of the plan, I'm talking about asking questions about where do you see problems within housing? You know, do, you know, how do you feel about, you know, moving zones or, or whatever the questions might be?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, those are great points and I think the one thing we also gotta figure out is what these folks plan with this that we're doing.
Exactly.
If they're like, well, we're eight to twelve months out or we're not familiar to jump right into this, then I think time is, yes, I don't wanna rush through this process, but I also don't want, I feel there's some stuff we should get on top of before we, we get too far down the road. We, we, we've never, when the two thousand twelve plan was approved, there was never a congruency between the plan and the ordinances was ever done.
And that happens a lot in towns.
And that was five town managers ago and four, five different iterations of the current select board. And I don't think anybody on the select board now was on there when those questions were asked. Cause I ask them all the time, because once you get this plan approved, you've got eighteen months to make sure your ordinance is.
Right.
And the nice thing is, is that thirty-eight was a huge workload and that got done, but there's still some inconsistencies that happen no matter what. And so those are the things to kind of figure out. So Carl, we just, to bring you up to speed, we just pulled this out, we're just talking about getting the latest greatest information from everybody to get filled into here. And we're guessing that there's more information out there that's not on here yet.
Sure.
And that our goal is to try to get as much from most of these resources by, in preparation of our September nineteenth meeting. So that we can start really picking through. We also talked about kind of a rough timeline of trying to get through the comp plan, if possible, early two thousand twenty-four, have a lot of what we need to get fixed, wrapped up or at least planned to get. And that includes, okay, well, this is a big issue, so we should have a public hearing to discuss it, not the official approval of the plan public hearing, that, so that we could shoot for a June twenty-four ballot on the comp plan, makes sense. And then if we get, we realize as we live, look under the hood as Joe's analogy, by January they were like, it's not gonna be done. Then we're gonna bump to November because that's a presidential election, so there's a good round electorate that will show up to vote, show the president. So it gives us an opportunity to make sure we've got a good, good vote for whatever we do on that.
Yeah, and get, get the input from the community, which I think you were talking about. Make sure everybody gets a chance to say their portion.
Well, the nice thing is, it's, it's a lot different than when we did, when it was done in twelve because there's Zoom now and there's.
Sure, there's a lot of other tools.
There's a lot of other tools that didn't exist before and.
Probably get a better turnout on some of those electronic formats and surveys and different things than you would do in public comment.
And then the goal being, once that's approved, it's still gonna take ninety to a hundred and eighty days for the state to accept it.
Yep.
And at that time, we've gotta start running on the ordinances. And that'll be, if the committee, if the board selects that our implementation includes getting the ordinances to line up with the, the revised comp plan, then that would be the next subsequent twelve months. So really kind of a twenty-four month process to do everything. That's kinda what we're talking, does anyone disagree with my summary? Is there anything I missed to tell Carl?
Um, I just have one other thought, I think it's vaguely related in terms of deliverables once we're at the, you know, the creation phase of this. And, and I agree with you, Chris, you know, a lot of times these things sit on the shelf. What I found is helps the attention to a comp plan is to, instead of having the actionable steps just in the plan after each chapter, at the end of the plan, dividing up who's responsible for what and having running lists. So the planning board has seventeen items, high, low, medium priority, the ordinance review committee does, you know, however you do it. And then the board of selectmen who's ever in charge at that moment can use that as a guide to give inspiration to these boards for the body of work that they should be focusing on by quarter or by year or whatever, and that's how you can get the plan to work.
And I, and I think that's a great idea and I think what also can be done, next step is the planning board controls the appointment of committees and the obligations they've done by those committees that the, of the planning board, the board of selectmen.
Right.
Uh, the board of selectmen can also just say, and part of what we expect is in, whether it's June, you know, generally these committees kind of run because of the calendar. Say by June of each year, there should be an annual update from this committee on the responsibilities that they have for the comp plan. So that that way Joe's got the summer with the staff to get all that information in there and then everybody starts in, in the fall with the latest greatest info.
Right.
And we're there.
And right, a lot of times too, they might have a meeting and the public would participate and it was floated as a great idea at the time, but the public was like, no, no, I don't want this. And so that information is super valuable for future planning too.
Correct.
But public, I'm sorry, key, new, two of those processes, because it's, the other ones will tell us where they wanna go.
Right.
Yeah, and it's an interesting thing because we have taxpayers, we have voters. And they aren't, there's a bigger subsection of taxpayers than there's actually voters.
Yeah, that you can talk about in twenty twelve.
Yes.
You know, that's a, that's a problem, but it's also a definite advantage, you know? Cause I start at this point all the time relative to tourism and, and, you know, people that, that live here, that don't live here but pay the taxes, generally even bigger taxes, maybe to a lot of residents. It's like an ideal scenario for a town because these people do not use the services to town typically. You know, I mean, I, I, I almost look at, and, and you know, people can tag with me on this, but it's, it's really beneficial money that a lot of communities don't have because they're not, they're not a vacation destination. They don't have, you know, they have, everybody that pays taxes lives and works generally there, so, you know.
I haven't updated my resident, non-resident calculation, but I am based on the new valuation, but it was high eighties, low nineties percent of tax base that was paid from.
From the.
From second home owners.
Second home owners, yeah.
Or commercial, yeah, so.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's the thing, we don't have commercial taxpayers, we have part-time people and.
We do have, we do have some commercial taxpayers.
Yeah, well, I know.
Not a lot, but, but. So it's, it's, it's an interesting.
It's an interesting thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's two sides to. Our school budget is, we, if you look at most of the, in the state, for instance, I still pay taxes, I own a home still in Wyndham, it was sixty-six percent of my tax bill is the school. Here it's thirty-three percent, which is unusual. School budgets are usually more than the municipal budget, here it's not. So it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting piece.
It is.
So, so. Hi Chair.
Hi, how are you?
Good, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, try to send to an email, I feel, or something.
Okay, no problem.
We'll figure it out, right?
We'll figure it out after the meeting, sure.
So what are your, based on this last discussion, just a pro of food to thought, there are two levels of, of people, there are the taxpayers that live here and taxpayers that come to the outside of second homes. Clearly there are areas, we start voting on things like school system and all where, where it's not in the best interest to have those who pay taxes from far vote on the school system and what we're doing with kids here. But other areas where we could include the total things and, and get their opinions on things as opposed to things that may be local or, or secondary.
Well, I, I hear where you're coming from, but I think our job should really be is to gather as much opinions and thoughts as we have and then kind of try to read the team leads and say, see how it sits. I know, I know there's groups here, there's a seasonal friends of Rangeley that, they're all here seasonally, but they do a huge fellowship to the school.
Right.
Yeah.
My youngest was a benefit of that, other factor of that. They do, there's a lot of different things. So I think, and we see it with a lot of things, there's a lot of contributions that happen from our, that are supportive. But I know when we were doing the school addition, there's probably almost more people who were supportive that were from outside than in, so it's, it's really hard to read that. But I think, I think to me what's important is that I, I want all voices to come to the table and then I think it's our job to try to sift through that and say, what are the common threads? What are the common things that are going to continue the, the community? So it is interesting though for this committee that we don't have anybody on this committee that has been in Rangeley full-time in the longer than two thousand and eight, so.
Well, a lot of times the comp plan committees, I mean, maybe not the ongoing one that was, you know, involved with quarterly meetings and maintenance of the plan, but the creation or the update committee, I mean, I've always worked on committees that had twelve or fifteen people. You know, and maybe even having like, you know, or inviting people in to participate for some of the conversations because it's, it's really good to have the historic intellectual property of a community, that, that's part of the fabric of it. You know, it's also important to have it put frontline, I know you're on the school board, Chris, but you know, like a parent perhaps of a young child, you know, you'd want somebody that was retired, you'd want somebody that was working in agriculture, you'd want some, you know, not just the town employees and, you know, a few, you know, a few people, but really having a broad spectrum. Because you could be talking about the same issue, but people could see it completely differently.
Right, and I think that's where, at least in my experience, being involved with town government here for a number of years, it's very difficult to fill the seats.
Free beer and chicken.
Doesn't work, doesn't work. But I'm just saying, so really what we could to find a way is allow people to provide an opportunity to comment and provide input in a way that we could then kind of be able to sift through and, and look at what we're hearing. Uh, in a way that we could then kind of be able to sift through and, and look at what we're hearing. Um, you know, if we ran all these in the coffee shops around Rangeley, I think we'd get. A different feel than we're gonna get, you know, in the bars or whatever, so I mean, it's. I think really the important thing is just trying to figure out how we can data line as much as we can to. Uh, get those informations and um go from there, so back to the consultants. When are those interviews happening?
As soon as we schedule, I know that the last meeting kind of wanted to have this conversation first before we go into actual.
And then.
Soon as we can have a schedule, we'll get to schedule.
Okay.
And I have a bunch of interview questions, if you wanna add that to your mix. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a thought, in one of those, you said, I noticed one. Go ahead.
Um, you know, back to your question a few minutes ago about outreach. You know, the more I look through this, if, if it is of interest to the committee, um, I could send a blanket email to these folks. To everybody on this and see if they can. Get back to us in a week or so, that kind of dial it in on who hasn't responded, and maybe, maybe that we dial in the outreach, and I need help with that.
I mean, there's nothing alarming or damning in this, it's straightforward information, right, I mean, it's all exists, right? So, I mean, you can access and say, hey, we're updating, please look through, these are the areas of which.
If you'd like me to give that shot, I'm willing to.
That would be great.
I'm talking, you know, universe internally, I have that, that I have some control over, but externally, I'm willing to give that shot. And see what comes back.
Uh, that's the path of least resistance, I'd try that first.
I have a question on that. Is it possible to just put something in the local paper to say that we're soliciting um input? From anybody that has anything on their mind that they wanna contribute to positives and negatives?
We're talking about updating this ongoing list of the previous con plan and the, the um committees and departments and. Uh, people that were allocated for actionable steps.
We're talking about.
Right.
Specific people that are listed.
Right, and so once we find, we get our inventory up to date, then we can go, and then we'll do the, you know, read.
I think you're on page five with that, I think we're still on page one.
You must have started with that.
It's okay, no, 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 it's fine, it's, uh, what you're bringing up is very valuable and. And great input and a great suggestion for a strategy, but I think. That's like page five, and we're, what we wanna try to do for page one is kind of. This, this is the document that says, okay, this was the goal, this was the policies, this was the strategy. This is who was responsible for it, this was the timeframe, what happened in the past thirteen years?
This is a very nice document.
So the more we can get of this, so that that way we can go through, and I think. And what we talked about before, you and Carl right here was that I think our goal will be kind of be to go through and say, okay, once we've. Got this out to everybody and we've gotten the feedback back, that we can say, all right. This particular action strategy, nothing's happened in eleven years, why? Is it because it's not germane anymore to what's going on? Is it because it wasn't? From a system standpoint, it wasn't enough push or accountability help to the group that was responsible for that? A number of these things, or is it obsolete? You know, these are the things so that we can then go down through and determine whether we think the most stay.
When the comprehensive plan was done. Was there a implementation committee established at that time that all?
It was required in the plan that they never did about.
So what happened, was it an ordinance committee or just random people that just saw that certain things need to be addressed, and it kind of went that way?
Essentially, yeah, I mean, different managers over the years had uh. Prioritized it, but had to balance it with other things that were happening, you know, elsewhere.
I think what the con plan got used for pretty much for the past eleven years was. If somebody disagreed with the course of actions being taken, they went and looked at the con plan, the con plan pointed in one direction. We were going in another, then the con plan became an issue. If the con plan and those were rowing in the same direction, um, then. It's kind of a sleeping dog lie, I mean, and you guys are in here, but traditionally I've seen with most con plans, essentially. Committee works really hard on it, they get it all done, they spend like two to two and a half years doing it. And it gets done, and then it gets stuck on a shelf, and it really doesn't become the working document, it's kind of the. Hard part is, in the town of Wyndham, we, we did that process and then some of us came over. And then they set up an implementation committee, it's twenty three members. So I elected Viver's Law and said, I'm out, because there's just too many people for decision making. And um. So, and I think that's where Wendy's brought up some good points is that, you know, as we go through sections, there's going to be people that are more. Experts in all that stuff, and really kind of our guy is to kind of shine the light down the road, and then everybody's gonna help us fill in. What needs to happen, uh, and gets the input, so that we can kind of. Yeah, we don't have an internal planner.
So our planning.
We're gonna have to serve as kind of the default planner, because we don't have that, so we can either substitute that for the course of consultants. Filling in some of that, or collectively as a team, I think we've got a pretty good group that we can, we can, we can pull through some of these things, do that. And I could be wrong and people can wreck me, but I don't think the goal is to go through this thing as a. Throw it in the trash or a complete rewrite, I think it's to go through and we've got a, we've got a document that exists, it's kind of. You know, it's like a second edition almost, we're gonna, we're gonna edit, edit and update. So that that way, we can deal with a lot of the, the things that either aren't getting dealt with, that should get dealt with, or. Aren't getting dealt with, that really aren't germane anymore, so they go away, or. Add stuff because things existed, didn't exist then, I mean, Zoom didn't exist in two thousand, but it did, I did.
Well, I went through the comprehensive plan today, and I was looking at it off and on through the years, and it's really. A very exhaustive kind of document, and I could see how people might be overwhelmed. With all the different guidelines and policy plans and implementation strategies that AVCON, I think, put this together. Comes up with, and.
A lot of it's state managed.
It's very detailed, and there's a lot, there's a lot here.
There's newer ways of presenting con plans too, so this is would be an older, you know, example of one.
That's what the law was, the state law, two thousand twelve, they used to have a very, they actually had. I think in twelve, Darryl was still running that, they had a state planning office.
Yeah.
Which Governor LePage got rid of. Uh, when he was turning things down, but Darryl Brown, that's a lot of ties to Rangeley. Was in charge of that for quite a while, but when I went through the Wyndham plan and this play got done. The state planning office, and they had a very exhaustive criteria, and I bet that doctor bid probably cost back then a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand. Labor and.
Yeah, I think it was one seventy five or something like that.
Yeah, so I mean.
And there's warlord plate stuff in it too. That all towns just like that pushing up.
They, they did a lot of visionary meetings, visioning meetings in this, they, they did. I, I mean, I, they took, it took two years to create that plan, and I, I think that they did a really good job for the. Tools and equipment that they had at the time, you know, there's, to Chris's point, a lot of municipalities have it on a shelf. And so the newer versions of the data presentation is a lot more user friendly. And they've parsed it so that the actionable steps, it's just pull away. It's not like, oh, I'm in this section, I'm in this section, I'm in this section, because the, the beauty of it is getting the work done, because that's the vision. And if you can't figure out where, where your stuff is, you know, and it's as simple as just categorizing the people that are responsible.
Yeah, and, and so what we've been talking about is to put together a task list and say, okay, we're gonna attack these in different sections. Or have to decide what needs a light edit, what needs a heavy edit, what needs no edit, what needs to go away. And um kind of work our way through, and hopefully. It's a thorough process, but not really exhaustive. So I think it's gonna take, you know, and that's, that's where we're gonna have to try to go with that, and I think. Part of the challenge that we've got is, like for instance, we're looking here. One twenty four twenty two, like to go down historic, two thirds on the page. Darryl, to get a list of what we've done, a list of historical business, just call Joe, discuss the historical portion. Maybe further than our committee alone, other areas completed, overlooked information panels, scenic byways. Work on spelling here, safer routes to school. Now looking at downtown aquatic for parking sidewalks. So, those are the type of things that. You know, I think that's important, that we're gonna be able to put progress, and I'm gonna put last day added, and. You know, this is probably, by the time we're done this and updated, it's not gonna look quite as easy and print read on here. You really gotta have to look at it almost on the computer with a spreadsheet from that information, because it's gonna get. We should have some comments for, for pretty much everything. Or if not, then we decide whether it should even still be on. So.
Some of the directives too, or the policy, it's, it's not, these plans sometimes can become so nebulous that it's like. You know, it's like support historic and cultural activities, well, of course. So, you know, you really wanna figure out what the problems are. And identify those and not create solutions, but create, should we contemplate this, should we contemplate that, should we contemplate that? You know, from different perspectives, because that, that's where you get something that's meaningful at the end of the day.
And traditionally con plans have been set up what they're supposed to be, at least when we were doing them back then in two thousand twelve. Is there supposed to be the backbone to the community of where.
For policy.
Policy and things are to go, and then the ordinances are kind of the flesh and all those pieces that come out. Of how to implement those and protect those and do those things, so I think. There's going to be, there's an element of vagueness always in the con policy, because. It gives some flexibility based on what needs to be done.
Right.
And so that's where we had to find that balance of preserving that, but yet. Trying to make sure that it doesn't make a, you know, Mack truck can drive through. Something that has a material effect on overall vision.
Good.
So. Where do we want to start?
What's in the, the scope of services for these consultants to provide?
I think that's where we should finalize.
Yeah, you should just say possibly removing stuff or not.
So, um, do you have a copy of this, Joe, of the RFP scope? Well, I mean, so for us here, on the planning board, it's item A. It says assist the comprehensive plan review and implementation committee with any necessary revisions. Or updates of the twenty twelve con plan, including attendance at eight meetings in person preferred. The town wishes to conclude this task and submit the final draft to the state domain within twelve, twelve months of contract signing. So that's really, you know, and then B is review current and proposed ordinances to determine their cohesiveness with the con plan. And provide assistance in drafting updates and revisions of ordinance language. And then it goes on to on-call planning services, which is outside of ours for review. But those are the two things that we're kind of laser focused on as a consultant. For, for this committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it seems very broad though to me.
We just need someone to help us update it, basically, and usually what that means is like a facilitator or coordinator. And they can do a spectrum of things, they can be the ones that set the timeline of the meetings, they can use, they can set up all the media. They can help you flush out um subcommittee members or focus group numbers and like a. You know, a public meeting, sometimes they don't do it where there's a panel, you know, speaking, or, or people don't come up to a podium. Sometimes you set up workshop tables and you might have each workshop have like. A category or a question, you're like, well, what do you think about this that has something to do with the economy? And then everyone in attendance writes down their comments and goes from table to table to table to table. So that, that would be the first note, and then usually they draft the plan too, I mean, that's what I've seen.
So Mr. Chair, so everybody knows that when, when this, uh, when the budget was prepared for this, my. Thought process was that the town would do as much of the legwork as was practicable. That's, that price reflects that, and I think the chairman has, has noted that, you know, a town can spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars having. A consultant do everything, that's, that's not the way that I budgeted for this.
Yeah, forty five thousand is not gonna get us too far, that's gonna cover our mapping.
It's the heavy lifting, the real heavy uh specialty stuff, now. We don't need to fret about that, if you decide, okay, you want to have more help, we can always program it next year's budget, it just kind of pushes the project out. But I think, um, you know, we've got a good style with everything broken out and having the conversation, that once we get rolling, we can do a lot of that. The town, this committee and staff can do quite a bit of it to keep the cost down, but also to keep ourselves involved in the process.
Right.
Like I see B is tabled until.
And that's something AVCO can help with within the, the confines of their, of our existing relationship with them.
So is there a goal, is our main goal not to necessarily implement for two thousand twelve comprehensive plan, but to update it?
We have to update it.
So it'll be a two, twenty twenty four con plan when we're done with it?
Yeah, I mean, that's. Look forward.
That's the.
Where do we wanna go forward?
That's the R.
We're gonna update this.
That's the R of CRIC, it's con plan review, implement, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with a lot of this because I worked in town records for twelve years, so I'm very involved with. Organizing all of it, but not sitting on the committee. I know every ten years, that's when they usually try to update it, so that's what we're looking to do, we're looking to update it.
Right.
Yep, and then from there, will there be any proposed ordinance changes come?
Well, I think nobody ever scrubbed it for ordinances before. Never happened.
Well, I don't think our, our goal isn't to propose ordinance change, we make a recommendation that says, hey, some committee may need to look at the details to move us in that.
Well, that's why I'm kind of confused with the scope here, is why we would have it. Review current and proposed ordinances to determine their cohesiveness with the con plan. And advise assisting in drafting updates and revisions of ordinances needed, to me, that's a year two.
Well, you have to think about that as the town does not have a town planner. So they're using the consultant as a person that will step into that role. But for our purposes, in my interpretation of what we're doing here, is that we have uh an opportunity to get professional facilitation. To get this update done, and that's really all we need to do, for, once that's done, then there might, we might have a new scope of work.
And that scope, Mr. Chair, was, was again designed broadly for the, the planning needs of the town.
Right.
And one of which is the con plan, uh, which is why it's here, why you're discussing it.
So are we almost like a comprehensive plan committee rather than implementation committee?
Yeah, comprehensive plan review and implementation committee.
I think the review part is the update part, I mean, basically, the way I would look at this thing, and I've just been listening to this conversation, I mean. The con plan is a high level document, we're not gonna get into the minutia beyond what we feel we have to. Uh, my basic view of this whole thing was I, you know, is that there's so much data that needs to be updated here, that's either. Um, we're using like two, two, the two thousand lots for all this, looking at this stuff, two thousand four, two thousand six. I mean, it's, it's so odd, it, every, all the numbers have to be updated. You know, population, demographics, economics.
Housing.
Housing, uh, there's myriads of things here, so, you know. What I was talking about earlier, I think before you two guys got here, was like, you know, what is the process of this, do we need to, uh, you know. I know, I know Chris has got the tasker concept from Warren Cook, which I think is great, so we all sort of look at this initially. And try to, I guess prioritize, and once we prioritize the things we know have to be addressed, we begin to, um. You know, sign out tax, things along that line, but, but the first thing is to kind of go through and clarify, you know. What other things that have to be addressed now, I mean, we're two years out of compliance, more than two years. So you say ten years, and we should, we should have been looking at this six, seven years ago.
Well, it's just that ten years, it's not.
Not don't grants and things require, uh, well, you may know more, you would do, definitely know more about than I do.
Your con plan is never out of date, but you can get funds turned down because it's not.
Well, yeah, that's my point, I mean, why should we have to. Well, yeah, that's my point. I mean, why should we have to?
Right, so.
So that's where we're doing now.
Yeah, so that's really the question that we're at, Steve, is that we've got to figure out. To me, I think the first goal that we have to figure out as a team is. How many layers of the onion do you wanna dive into that conflict? I think statistics and updated numbers is clearly first thing. And to me. That's where I think the consultant part can do some heavy lifting on that part because. They do several these plans. It's going to be a cut and paste.
But that's where I was going.
But we don't want it to be cut and paste for range like we want to have.
Oh, it's gonna be, they're gonna.
Yeah, data wise.
Data wise, they can.
Yeah, I mean, when I was a commercial.
Yeah. DOT data.
Yeah.
That's that cuz my mind went to the same place. It's how are we even gonna pick what's? What's still valid in this, right? And if none of the, cuz a lot of this complaint is supported by data and trending that was forecasted. But fourteen fourteen years ago, and without that data, how?
Right, so exactly. So what I think needs to happen, and that's where I think the scope of work would be for consultants to say. We need you to take. All the numbers in this plan and update them to current.
Current as current as we can get.
That to me would be the first scope. First part of the scope. And when I say cut and paste, what I'm talking about is when I was a commercial broker. In Portland, I had databases and information to that I could go into, get information and do my update. Of whatever I needed. There's traffic engineers, there's all this stuff, there's all the DOT stuff.
They can log in. A lot of the studies it's pulled from, it's just going to that.
Right. Yeah, so that's.
Requesting the updated data.
So if you did it for Gray, you go into the same DOT guy and say, okay, I need it for.
Correct.
Range. And it it all exists. All that traffic data exists, all that stuff there. They just work with it regularly and they have access to go and pull that. They've got the whole state work. So I think. To me, that's the initial scope of I'd like to say for the consultant, and I agree with Steve about that is. If we get all that data updated, like we're calling saying, then we can kind of, okay, we've got the new data. Let's talk about what it, what what the data looks like.
Go through the actual.
And we'll go through the sections.
Make a comparison.
And by that point, we'll have the update from each of these groups. As to what they've done on those actions and then we're going through it and going, okay. Here's the old info, here's the new info, here's what's been done in ten years. What do we wanna have covered over the next ten years?
Because this is only gonna get us to a twenty twenty three baseline.
Right.
That's basically what you're saying. Everything comes back to now to a twenty twenty three baseline. And then we forecast reject out ten years. So we're talking about sort of. Calmly now together the the baseline stuff first.
Well, and I think the other thing that it'll let us do is. Did the data change organically? Was it something the town implemented that helped? Do you know, did the complaint work? Did it not? Did it have any effect on?
Well, and even to, you know, to your point with population in the last, in our current cop comp plan, it says projected population in last plan. Said in twenty twenty two, they projected it be um one thousand one hundred and fifty people. So I think we're at. One thousand two hundred or so and change.
Twelve, twelve was the last.
So interesting that they they're pretty close, you know, but there's a lot of things that.
Yeah.
Have changed that this in in the world of twenty twelve, nobody.
Employment statistics will be interesting to see. Does have that changed?
Well, and don't forget median house prices.
Median house prices.
Right, and.
Even the school size that they projected here is, I think they said it would be the flat line or had decreased leading up to this com plan, right?
But don't forget what the school study is weird. I mean, like twenty twenty, we ended up with thirty five new students and then.
Because.
And then we clawed back seventeen the next year.
So where is it? Is it flat?
So it's it could, it went like this because. There are people who said, okay, it's a pandemic, we're gonna, kids are gonna go to school in range this winter.
Right.
And we're gonna stay out of, we're gonna stay here for a year. And then they, after a year, they went back.
Right.
So so we had no, we had fifteen percent bump. The pandemic, you know, it's crazy.
Oh, it's border patrol.
No, yeah. But the border patrol grew like in two thousand twelve. Border Patrol was Jeff Boradard and like six agents, we grew to forty one. So that's a big jump. And that makes a difference on our law enforcement stuff. Those guys do a lot of backup with our current team and. And we haven't been able to fill.
Please.
The police, so we've had to use a lot of backup with Cumberland, I mean, Franklin County. And those things. So does anyone disagree that? The clear, one of the clear scopes is. We need all our statistical information updated and does anyone disagree that that would be a good job for the consultant?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that's outside. They have a lot of information. So I think that should be.
Give me the line item bid on that, which is the update all the data.
But a lot of it, we already, we already have a relationship with Abco and that that, you know, we pay them around eight grand or sell a year and they're. They have, they're the ones that any consultant would go to to get the information.
Some of it, not all of it. Abco doesn't have. Abco doesn't have the traffic studies. Abco doesn't have.
Well, can we reach out to them and ask them more and ask them how much time it would take to get it back from them?
I think when we interview, these are kind of questions in a frame, aren't they?
Right.
Cuz they're one of the bidders.
So I would, they all got a copy of the comp plan, right?
Yes.
So I would suggest. That before you interview them. That you send ahead to them and say, one of the scopes we're gonna be looking for. Is this that part so they can come in and kind of say. By the end of that meeting or a follow up, but they can say. We're gonna charge you X amount to update that. It's a, it's a finite thing. Is X amount of statistics? Is she able to look at that and say, okay, this is what we're gonna charge you?
Well, cuz it it almost seems like the request proposal is very broad, like. Are are they just like an hourly rate and you use it at time and expense and everything's that?
Oh, yeah, that's what they propose.
Depends on the proposal.
Okay, so they can come, there's no set format.
They showed an hourly rate with all their stuff that came in.
The world I live in bids are very particular of what's included and what's not and.
Yeah, me too.
You know, assumptions and clarifications.
This is a clarified, I think, that I think we could request a a bit number on that. And I think you could ask Abco with the correlated values. What services of those are you automatically providing for us? Under our stipend. But I think that's a clear thing that could be in. In your, in every part to get that.
Don't think a lot of the answers.
The other piece, as far as the data update is. Are there any changes in the state goals that we need to know about that have changed in the last twelve years that the planners should take a look at?
Yeah, all, any consultant would be able to update that. You know, you want your. You want your ordinance language to meet clients with state, obviously, but. Goals, I mean, there's certain things that we've done in this community. I think you mentioned it last meeting, like the dark skies, it's not state issue, but it's a regional. You know, focus. Um, I think. The, there's definitely gonna be like uh. Carbon stuff, there's gonna be, you know, resiliency, all that kind of stuff coming climate coming from the state. What, I don't think they've compelled anybody to put that into the comp plan that I read anyway.
But that's gonna be part of what we ask the planners to do. As far as the data update that we're gonna do and update the goals that the state is suggesting as well. I'm thinking of that as just.
They should be able to tell us the delta.
Right.
Which is, here's our two thousand twelve plan, what things do we have to do to be compliant with two thousand twenty two? I think that's the scope of the question. So I think those are the two things. To start with, and then I'm assuming. To me. Diving into the ordinance and stuff is gonna be premature.
Oh, wait, yeah.
So that scope, I almost think that B should go away for now, but. That's possibly an ancillary.
But that's not for us, though.
Right, yeah, that's.
That's not for us. That's for the 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 planner. So we're just A, we're just A.
So you're hiring them as a planner?
To facilitate some of this work.
Certain elements, yes. Yeah, so if you look at this com plan. This is a working document that I was using. Uh, I did subtract the color, but most of the things are yellow for me. A year or two ago, looking at the number of times that a planner comes up at this time. So guess the town, we're very fortunate to have like. High horsepower code enforcement right now. That makes me very comfortable, but you know, we have not done. Consistently. The level of plan which we've done and planning in a fifty. Professional sense of.
It depends. I mean.
Unless he was bad.
We don't have a large commercial district. We don't have, I mean, that's where most of the problems come that. Like I know the town window when I lived there, they. They went out and got a planner cuz they had a concrete jungle on three oh two and. People weren't happy and the farms were getting bought up to give. Sparrow and redevelopment. That was ninety nine to two thousand five. So they, the planner was almost a reactive.
Right.
And now they have like three planners on their board.
Trying to plan downtown.
They built a marijuana district and they did all the stuff for downtown. And they built industrial park and a few other things. So I guess the question is is. Are we gonna eat that or we just need somebody to come in tactically? And that's where you guys are deciding at the board's level. So really, the only thing we need to provide you today to satisfy what you need, Joe, is I think we just provide. A a cost, a fixed cost to come in and update all the statistics in the book. They should get to give us a quote for that.
And provide any new ones.
And then provide any adjust, any requirements between our two thousand twelve and what's required in two thousand twenty three in a complex.
Right, so. And the data with. Yeah, so.
And the data related to that.
In mind, whatever the 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 entire scope is that we ask for these consultants. Comes out of that pool of forty five thousand. So we may not even get to the ordinance things and the other stuff that's in that. RP because this complan may take up the lion's share of what we have in the bank. So I'm just gonna keep that in mind, like we have to get to those items. We have to ask for that in the future here.
So my understanding is, sorry. My understanding changed a little bit tonight as to what our purpose is here. Um, I thought we were actually gonna be implementing. This old comprehensive plan, but we're really. We're really doing a comprehensive plan. Commission, whatever you wanna call it. We're really not gonna be implementing any changes. So implementing means putting into effect the strategy.
No, I think actually we're gonna, we're gonna be able to do both because we, I think as we go through, we're gonna realize. Some things in two thousand twelve are still important in two thousand twenty three. And we can start pushing the implementation of those things that they're not being implemented.
So we would suggest.
Regardless of the new approval of the player.
So we could suggest what we feel is still uh pertinent. To the planning board, right? That's what, or do we go to the ordinance committee from here?
This will end up in a town meeting when we're complete, um, you know, when you do your update. But look at it, Terry, is it is a chance for us to take the pulse on this existing document. That's that's. Review, ta- take a temperature on what has been implemented and to your point, recommend what could be or should be implemented, you know? Say, okay, this needs to be done, but at the same time, you're working on an overall update. Uh, that'll that'll kind of guide us for the next ten years. So if I can go back to the process that the uh.
Can that answer your question, Jerry?
Not completely.
It didn't look like it did, so let me, let me take another shot. So. This here is, which you just got tonight, you have a nice chance to look over, lists every action item that was in the comp plan. And list who is responsible, what the timeline was supposed to do it, and then we're supposed to have the progress. Our goal is gonna be by September nineteenth to fill as many of these things in as possible. But we're, what, so what we're really kind of trying to do, from my understanding is. We're not throwing this document in the trash and starting over. We're gonna take what all the vision work and all the things that were done. We're gonna get an update to the statistics and I'm gonna look at the tea leaves, so to speak. And see, okay, well, that changed a lot. Should we do a revisioning of this section because the world's a lot different than before? Or is the trend data kind of gone like everybody thought it was gonna go? And we can kind of just keep toting along as we've got there. At the same time, we're going to, as this information comes back, we're gonna look at that and say, okay, say for instances, or yeah, we're tracking the way we are. But we've got nine things in here and only one thing has really been important that keeps consistently getting updated. The question then becomes, do we, do we just reference these things as things that are important? Or do we need to still have specific actions? Because we have action strategies for nine things. And in ten years, eight of those things, nothing's been done on. And we're tracking the way we thought we were. Do we really need to have these eight action items on there still? Or are we good with just the main one? That is, make sure all the historical buildings are marked on the thing. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's that's the answer. I'm just saying. Kind of the analysis we wanna be able to do is get through that. And with these consultants, we want them to do. The heavy lifting of the data and those pieces. And more importantly, since they work on complaints for several towns, several years, they're in the thick of it. They're gonna go, oh, yeah, you guys are two thousand twelves. That means you're missing. This and this and this and this.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, Chris, and I appreciate you trying to explain further to me. I guess my question is still, do we have any uh? Will we give any suggestions to any other board, like an ordinance committee or a planning board about things that we do think is still. Pertinent to us as well as what we're gonna propose to update comprehensive plan. So is there like two different? Two different directions that we're going in?
If something hasn't been done here.
Yeah, it could either go away or we can say.
That we have still.
We can go back to that group that's responsible and say, I know you haven't provided anything on that. Can you guys take the next couple of months? And give us an update on these three actions?
So it's possible that.
With the permission from them, we have to report back to the board of selectmen to get permission for that to happen.
Right, so in the in the bio license admission statement, you'll make recommendations to the town manager and board of selectmen regarding implementation of updates to the plan. So that's how it'll get funneled back.
Right, to the other department, right.
Yeah, so like of these eight here, we look at, say, okay, either these aren't done. And you, Terry, say, well, geez, number three and number four really should get done. We agree as a group and say, okay, let's. Have Joe reach back out through the board of selectmen and have those responsible parties. Give us something three and four because that's gonna help us with the whole.
Yeah, we're not, we're not reaching out directly to departments and such. Those got his staff.
We're not really allowed to unless we get permission from the board.
That's what I say, we're making recommendations to board of selectmen to do this.
Yeah, we, our our boss is the board of selectmen.
Right, that's right. So we don't.
So we don't, we can't do any lateral moves on that unless we've gotten a blessing and. Part of the reason we wanna get this document up and then Joe can talk with that at the select board meeting and say. I want this document to be like. Out there that people can look at it. And see the information and be like, yeah, you know what? I can help with that number five. Or whatever, and and then they provide input, but we've gotta get a blessing for the board of selectmen. Before we even put that out. It's out there. It's technically anyone Freedom of Information Act can come in and request this document. But if we're gonna make it overly out there or have a section on the website of which people can look at it and comment, then I think that's where.
Yeah, it doesn't require board approval, but a a good rule of thumb is never let the board be the last to know about it.
Correct.
Let them know first and then.
So we would talk to the board or through you, tell them about some things that we think might still be pertinent.
Absolutely.
But it might have already been done too, if you don't know.
They could charge the planning board or whatever ordinance committee to look further into it.
Yep.
And it's possible that new ordinances could be created and put on the town or in June.
That is possible. It's ambitious, but possible.
Okay, that's what we need to. Yeah, ambitious, yeah.
And if it can happen, Jerry, we just hope direct.
Yeah.
Right, if it doesn't happen in June, then hopefully. And 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 Madam Chairwoman from Understood has stated that. She wants an update from every committee in person at least what, once a month?
She said a lot of quarters.
Once a quarter.
Yeah.
So once a quarter. Probably I'll go in and do an update. You guys wanna come on, make sure I don't miss anything. And we can give an update and say, well, this is what we're doing and then this is where we're going. But I think for your purposes, Joey, you were looking for tonight was to get um.
Just one thing I'm missing.
Okay.
And I mean, if I can ask it, so I get where you want.
Well, what do you expect?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I get where we're going with the the statistics. That makes total sense. When we meet with the consultants and interview, I wanna get. Uh, kind of a general idea of you folks, how involved we want them with the process. Do you want them? Do you really need them here for eight meetings or do you want it to come, I don't know, once? As needed, as we request them. Do you want them to facilitate facilitate any workshops or surveys? Do you want? Uh, to do some of that as a committee with some help from staff?
I don't think we know that answer yet. I think what it'd be better.
Generally speaking.
I think it'd be better is that we have this, the ability that we could call on them. To do seven or eight meetings, but we don't know what those eight meetings might be.
I don't think you're gonna need eight for for rewrite if you get all the data points in and you get the mapping updated.
But we could use them for three or four of those to do some visionary workshops in certain sections.
Oh, I think that we definitely would have.
So I like having an idea of the in person on the sheet. And then we can choose what the scope of those meetings are gonna be. It's not gonna be that big, kid.
Okay, so it sounds generally like you're still interested in having uh someone involved with the process itself.
To a certain degree.
For the data, you're looking for some professional assistance with the process.
I think there's gonna be some heavy lifting, especially with the, anything that's changed between twelve and twenty three. I don't wanna say and try to envision what the state domain's gonna accept. These consultants do this stuff all the time. So they're used to knowing they've got the next amount of plans approved. They can say, okay. You're missing this section. This is typically the elements that are needed to complete that to satisfy say. Last thing we wanna do is submit to state and then the state comes back and says, you've gotta do a bunch more stuff.
Right.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Does that clarify your questions?
It totally does, thank you, I just, I wanna frame how we interview these folks so we know what the output.
Yeah, and then you and Wendy and Steve are sitting on that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
I have a question about that. If we don't need them for eight meetings to be here in person, can we use that comp time or whatever and other purposes for the committee for like research or?
Depends on how we sign the agreement with the consultant, but yes, I would wanna set it up that way. If we need all eight, we can say, okay, we need six, and then we redeploy the, the funds somewhere else. You know, whether it's by the hour or some specific task.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, this is the, Nick, a point that's very, I think, I've done a lot of strategic reviews in my career and. You have to look at this piece of paper as the rearview mirror. This is what we've done, where we've been, and some of this, um, is not one of the relevant we could do, so we check box. And then you look at this as, but still relevant today, um, what, what here do we carry forward? And so it's kind of like, you see the road in front of you, but then the long-term plan is what do we see beyond the road in front of us, plus down the road? And to do that. But Carlson is absolutely right, you've gotta have the data, it starts with the data. If you don't have the data, you have no started. So I think you start there, review the plan, what hasn't worked, what doesn't work, but's still relevant. Um, and then you begin to construct. And then, you know, or actually it's two phases, the first phase, the second phase comes next to you, and if we get that, but we have a vote. Then it's how do we drive results, and that's a whole other discussion and a whole other group. Then you talk about, I, I've never done anything less than a three-year review, but usually a quarterly reviews, yearly review, and then three-year rewrites. And that's how you stay up, that's why, that's how you stay up on this kind of thing without letting it get ten, twelve years old. And then have them sit down, essentially, we're starting some ways from way behind eight balls. Mister Chair, I see the point that Greg raised up, you know, there's this process that's in front of you now, then, you know, be thinking about what this committee could do annually or semi-annually. And semi-annually, you know, go forward, have a, have a tabletop like you're doing now and just check in.
Yeah.
Hopefully, once the framework is built and all the gears are, you know, this is, it's easier, quicker, you know, you've got all the information, just check it on.
And to get some buy-in from the Board of Selectmen to implement, requesting that these responsible parties do an annual update, then I think we'll get, we'll be able to stay ahead of the wave.
I appreciate everybody's input to just, I don't know if it helped clarify anything for anybody else, but it, it did help with me.
So. So we are a little over our one-hour timeframe, if anyone has anything that they need to run off to or.
Do we have a sense I have an hour to have it?
Do we have a sense I have an hour to have it today?
Just an hour. So we're all in on it, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, we got fifteen more minutes to kind of go with it.
We gotta get to it.
I can remember if this one's the hour and a half or the fifth, so.
So where do we start?
Do you wanna talk about the proposals, so, you know, prior to us interviewing the people? I mean, it, cuz we, that's what you asked us to do is read them last time, right?
Yeah, yeah, did you have any more thoughts on those? And one other person you worked with before, right?
I did, yes, I did.
So.
Um.
So how's that handled from a conflict standpoint? It's not really a conflict, right?
If you would, you would have to disclose it if you, if you were uh at this level and at, at the board level, you were to gain anything from it, right?
I do disclose it at the board level, yeah.
Yeah, um, certainly if you were to gain something from that, or still be gaining anything from, you would have to accuse yourself.
You're retired.
You're not gay, make me sorry.
That's right, I got, I got no gains, I got all draws.
But I think it's good to, no, cuz you, there's, I know I just did a lot with it, worked to the, to the town three quarter, you know, you did a lot for town three quarters.
No, I know. Yes. Yeah.
But other than that, I don't see any issues, because there's a ton of actual gain.
So you guys looked through all the proposals, do you have any other thoughts? I mean, I'm sure Wendy's got a couple.
Yeah, I didn't actually look through the proposal, I looked through comp plan, that's what I did.
Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I started to look at those RFPs, but I, I'm not a select board member, I don't really know what's at, at stake and what's involved, so I just felt like I didn't have enough experience.
So why don't we kind of talk top level what the three groups are?
Oh, from my perspective?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
I, I think we're probably on the same page for that.
Yeah, AVCOG is a, is a regional planning entity, um, it's Anderson Skoggin Valley. And they work in a facilitatory way with different municipalities that perhaps might not have a town planner, like is the case here in Ranjly. Or that need um outside of the normal job description of a planner work. Even if a town has a planner, they usually get a consultant for comprehensive planning work. Because sometimes it's good to have someone from away deal with the visioning and deal with the creation. Because then it's, it's, it's a fresh set of eyes and it takes a little heat off the meetings too. Um, if there is heat there, um, AVCOG we have a relationship with. And what I took notes, cuz I read them once before and then I reread them. So they offer two comp plan meetings within their scope of work for, for this particular proposal. Um, but they are considered above that supported by the annual membership, so that would not be included in the seven thousand and change. Um, in AVCOG's proposal, they only mention item on the scope D and E. They didn't mention any comp plan work necessarily. So, you know. I think that they kind of just reissued a, a proposal that they had sent previously, is that correct, Joe?
That is correct, and I just, they rejected one thing, that they, they are not competing with the other folks, they are just giving the information to us as, as information that this is what we need.
Yeah.
So we could either go solely with AVCOG or we could still use AVCOG as one of the options.
Right, so. But we pay for their comp plan time outside of what we've already, you know, based them for. And what we already use them for is some of the stuff that we're, that needs updating in the comp plan anyway. L K, that's Donna Lawson, a woman I know, she has her own consulting company. I worked, I was on, I was a planning board chair in three quarters for thirteen years or so. Um, so I, I've definitely worked with her. She's very good at what she does in terms of planning and she has a lot of experience in municipalities, not just in three quarters, but she also does consulting work. I think she's doing stuff with Rockland and so forth. She's a good consensus builder, that's what I've found over the years. And she is um a person that isn't rigid in terms of planning. And I think that her planning style has changed a little bit from when she first started to where she is now. Because she's been on the user end doing consulting work. So she's, uh, she, you know, she's, I think she's seen things like, wow, that's, that doesn't make any sense from a user perspective, so I thought that was interesting. I would have confidence with her with the comp plan. And AVCOG too, I just haven't met the particular consultant that is allocated to us, so that would be interesting. And then the other one, is it North Star? Is that what it is? That, I've worked with that fellow Ben before too, because I have property and I know that he has done a lot of planning in Wyndham as well. He is very bright individual, young, his company's very young. One of the things I would ask him differently from some of the other people that we're interviewing is. They didn't submit a proposal specific to Ranjly. They kind of gave examples of some of their work and links to, um, you know, the comp plans that they've done in the past. But they didn't really drill down and say, hey, this is what I think I could do for you. And this is where I think I can really benefit your, you know, you get the most ROI on, you know, the paint and that type of thing. So I don't know whether it was a, maybe you, I'm probably too old. Maybe that's like, you know, a more millennial way of um working than what, you know, I'm normally used to seeing in terms of really getting um. Drilling down into the character of the, of the town and what it means to the people here. Um, and I, in my personal opinion, I think that's the important part of the comp plan. I think all three of them could do a great job. The North Star's ninety-five dollars an hour, so they're on the pricier side, so that was kind of where I was like, ooh, you know. And. I, I, I just, I would wanna make sure that they're, they're fully aware that's an update, not a rewrite. Because I think that some of theirs, there, some of their work had gone beyond the original scope. Done, that's just my two cents.
When you ask these folks, um, these questions when you interview them, do you ask them all the same questions?
You should.
That they have a, be sure.
You should. Yeah, when you do interviews like this, in my experience anyway, like, you know, when you interview chamber chairs, you know, town managers and all that kind of stuff. Usually have, you come up committee-wise with like ten questions. And then for each individual, and based on questions from the group that might be specific to that person's skillset. Or, you know, where they're from, or something that you got a question about, then you get more personalized at the end, end of the interview. But you really wanna compare apples to apples for this type of scope of work, you know, evaluation.
Does the town have a contract with either of those two, L K or North Star? Do we use consultants to create this plan?
They did, yes.
Those people are, are still around or they choose to?
I mean, AVCOG have handled it, um, I know that there was a very active committee, like you folks.
I think they use R K G because I gave my Wyndham plan to Rob Welch when they were doing it, so he had something that they'd done before.
I almost said John Maloney's.
I was just gonna say, I noticed John's name.
Yeah, they had, they had Arc, Eric Galli, Gates, Layton and Associates Incorporated too, as along with AVCOG. So they probably spit, uh, and then John Maloney as well. So maybe these are local people, but, um.
Gates, Layton Associates, I think that's a, yeah.
That's, that's a planner, yeah. Yeah. And I, you're right, I think that they do mostly traffic design, right?
Yeah, they're right.
Eric is a landscape architect, he actually was very involved after, after the comp plan, very involved.
He was on the help with the park.
Yeah. Incredible institution.
But I haven't seen him, so I can tell him I was right and he was wrong about the water.
But you know, it's, it's interesting though, in the la, in the comp plan that Joe provided to us, um, if you get an eye, you can get an idea of what they did last time in terms of. You know, the workload, so it, I think it's on page one fifty-eight. This, so they had a public visioning session, one, two, three, then a public hearing, a stakeholders meeting. And that's with the different groups and departments, which is a very cool thing they do, really. Um, they talk about use of media and so forth, and I'm sure that there are other meetings beyond that.
Yeah, I think it was at the state.
But for two years, there must have been a boatload of other meetings.
Yeah, it was a long process, I know.
Yeah.
Will this happen again after?
That's where the consultant could come and help us, kind of.
This question of how, how deep do you need the data?
Right.
I guess, I, the other thing I'd really like to get an opinion from them is, okay, we update the stats. And two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-three, we got a couple things from the state. Really, how much, how awful is it? How bad is it, Doc? Kind of thing.
Right.
You know, is, is, does it really need?
The worst. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd be interested to see what their take is.
Well, right.
And I think AVCOG's gonna do us the straightest answer, probably, cuz they're not.
I think we're giving straight answers from everybody, you know, but.
I don't know, consultants like to create work, in my experience.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, one of the questions that I came up with potentially was, um, in the review of our plan from two thousand twelve. Are there any new areas of focus that we should consider discussions on? Meaning, so we're looking at this in, in, you know, chapters. And sometimes you get so in the forest, you're like, oh, is that it? You know, maybe there's something else, there's something else that, because they've gone through multiple municipality visioning sessions and so forth, say, oh, you know what? You know what came up a couple times was X. And, and then that might not have even been in our mind, so we're like, oh, wow, we never really thought about that, that's an important thing to have discussion on.
I mean, just think about the two hot buttons we've dealt with in the past seven years. It's been, we had the marijuana ordinance and we had the short-term rental ordinance. And neither one of those were even on the time horizon in two thousand twelve.
Right.
Right?
Quasi-reference and has everything.
Yeah, it's a quasi-reference, but nothing like, no, definitely not the buzzword, I mean, that's only been created. Past five years, but.
No, but you're right, it's, I mean, they were.
But I mean, those are, if you think about it, those are the two big things that popped up that the most debate and discussion on. Neither one of those were even. Or seen or, so I mean, that's what's gonna happen, I mean, we're gonna update this whole thing and then over the next ten years. Two other, two or three other hot button issues gonna show up and, you know, I mean, the thing we dealt with, with. The light industrial versus heavy industrial and that whole problem, and the solar and some of those other things. Were just, ordinances weren't matched up with the comp plan and clearly defined. So, I mean, that's why those arose. So those are the ones, those, I think both of those were possibly avoidable. Definitely the light and heavy industrial one could have been avoided. It tied in, would have been a non.
But that's why.
Litigating.
That's why I would be using the R P, whether that happens in six months or.
Well, it's gonna happen, it's gotta be, there's gotta be a scrub.
Right.
So, and I mean, you can't scrub it until you have it done.
Can I see a copy of that R P? Okay, I see your copy, I don't know if I had one of my paperwork, if I did, I would. The, the R P that was sent out to these, uh, yeah.
I'll make a note to email that out there for you.
Okay.
Should be in your packet.
Is it general, is it general enough that when you ask the questions, we can be more specific of, about the ten questions that we asked each one that's similar?
Well, I think Wendy and Steve are doing that, not all.
No, I understand that, but I, I'm just trying to, you know, if it's, if we didn't ask that specifically in the R P request, then can we do it within that interview process?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I think the important thing is just be consistent with each interview, which you guys know.
Right, and we'll work together to come up with a list of questions and, you know, make sure that they're. Timed appropriately too, cuz that's a big thing in interviewing people, you don't wanna ask the fifth question first.
Right.
All right, um, any other announcements? No?
None.
Okay, next meeting is going to be, uh, September fifth from four to five thirty. Another hour and a half. Um, and.
What is our assignment?
Should we go through this thing to an L and M?
Yeah, well, I think the problem is you're not gonna have, we're not, we don't have any data on this part, so I would just say, look over this. If there's things you see in there that, what I call, don't pass the straight face test, you're like laughable, why is this in here?
Right.
Then highlight those and let's talk. And don't forget how this is broken down, if you haven't seen it, is like, this is the policy, these three. There's three action items under one policy, so the first three are ident, they're. The policy is the same for the first three, but the action items are different, so that's what drives the spreadsheet.
And what are the goal S and Rs, meaning short-term and soon that means short-term, S?
Good a state and regional.
Yeah. That's what it is, state goal, regional goal.
Okay.
Yeah, good call.
I was guessing.
I think that's what it is.
Oh, then the timeframe shows short-term.
I think you're right.
Yeah, the timeframe is on, yeah.
Timeframes on the end and then.
And then the money call, X or two or three.
I think that was just what is the investment.
Yeah, just disregard that for now, that was an internal.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it.
Colors don't really matter.
The colors don't matter at all, um, again, those were just left on there.
Just pretty.
And I'm gonna clean up what we do out there, and then if you can send me the email address you're deciding on to use for.
Yeah, I tried that today and I didn't get through, no.
Okay.
After we close the meeting, could I write down everyone's email address so that I can put it in the minutes? Or do you want it in the minutes or not?
Oh, not in the minutes. Cuz that's public knowledge.
Well, it's gonna be public anywhere.
Yeah.
It's freedom of information, that's why we're using the emails.
If somebody wants to see the correspondence.
Right.
And we're using that email, they can.
Well, we have established that email, I don't have mine yet.
They resurrected one.
Yeah, I'm gonna, oh, this is.
I'm, I made the format was C R, yeah, C R I C, which is the name of our committee, correct? Dot, and then fir- first name, Bob, first letter, yeah, first initial, last name. So I get prick dot C farmer at gmail dot com.
That's what.
And with, um, and with gmail, it doesn't matter case.
Yeah.
I need to secure it like.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if they're lower case or uppercase.
I set mine up with my name, C R I C at gmail dot com.
Okay.
I, I need to set one up as a special, it's a lot of confusing, like Google.
Christopher Park. If you look at the email that, that, um, Joe sent us, that, that, my email was in there, and then I sent an email to all of you.
Will that show up in there or was it blind card copy, I can't remember? Was this phone, they were in there?
Oh, yeah, you should be able to see everybody's.
You should be able to see everybody's email.
And you followed the format of C R I C first and then?
I sent to T Palmer forty-eight at gmail, you now have my email, that.
Yeah, okay, so should we all go with the C R I C first?
You do whatever you want.
I, I'm not doing that.
Wendy does, Wendy has a public domain one already. Wendy does, Wendy has a public domain one already to have down Rangeley. So she, she didn't have to do.
I'm gonna give you a fancy new one, so I can get the Google docs.
Right, so you do whatever format you want, I don't care, I just did that, it was easy for me. And then I'm just gonna put you guys all in a group and then we'll have a group for that, so.
There is, um, a, you know, if you, for the lack of homework, if people are interested in reading about this, there is a really interesting publication, I think it's on, um, main.gov and I can. I have it on my computer, um, I can forward it to you and it's about how to go about creating a comp plan from a committee perspective. Um, I'm happy to share it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
That's on, that's on main.gov.
I'll send it around.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other business at this time?
No, most of it's.
Move to turn, Wendy?
Yeah.
Steve second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Sorry, a few minutes passed.